Okay, so I will call the meeting to order. And I don't have anything to add to the agenda tonight, I don't believe. So I think we'll move right into it. So our first item is comments from the public on items not on the agenda. Does anyone in the audience have comments? Okay, great. Then we'll move to the consent agenda. Is there anything that needs to be pulled from the consent agenda?
The superintendent evaluation testing meeting minutes need to be pulled.
Right. We don't approve testing minutes. The test teams do that themselves.
I have a question about the professional appointment for the art teacher at Fleming.
Okay. Do you remember the name? Yeah?
Is that the one that just came today?
Yes, it is. Okay.
So are we?
So we're pulling one professional appointment. Do you know the name of the test team?
Yes, yeah, the last one we got today.
What's the name?
So we're going to call Emily Coffrin, Point Five FTE.
Okay, so we'll pull that.
From an art teacher that's replacing the teacher that we have moved.
Right. So we'll pull that. I also need to pull the 18-19 tax anticipation note because we didn't have any information about what bank that's going to be with and so forth. And Brian has that information for us. All right. So, Marla, are you ready to make a motion?
I move that we approve the school board meeting minutes of June 5th, 2018. And of course, this is under the consent agenda, Kim.
Yeah.
Also, approve professional appointments of Deborah Alden, Point Four FTE at Essex High School, French teacher. And Sonya Kennedy, One FTE at EMS, school nurse. And that is contingent upon some specific wording. I had my hands on, here we go. And her hire is contingent upon the receipt of a valid license issued by the state of Vermont. Okay? And the next one is Nora Varhu, a One FTE at EMS, math teacher. And she is also contingent upon the receipt of a valid license issued by the state of Vermont. We also had to, we had a release request from teacher contract, and that is Deb Alden as a One Point Oh FTE teacher at ADL for French. And we have the approval of warrants.
So this is the consent agenda. So all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Thank you, Marla. So we have two items that have been pulled. Let's start with the recommendation for hire for Erin Coffrin.
Emily.
Emily Coffrin.
My question was that she's replacing Lisa Foley, who I believe was either full-time or close to full-time and split between Fleming and Summit. And I wondered what the plan was for the provision of art at Summit.
I actually don't know. I was surprised that we didn't get the other one for Summit. So that's my question, but this is a part-time. So whether that one, I don't know.
Okay. So you think that we should?
I think you should approve it, yes. Absolutely. Absolutely. Maybe she only wanted half-time. I don't know. Or is the other one going to come through? We're also, one was waiting on a Hayawatha situation, so it could be all of that combination. So I think you should approve the part-time.
Thanks for clarifying.
Well, as much as I could.
So I'll entertain a motion that we approve the recommendation for hire for Emily Coffrin for Point Five FTE art position at Fleming. Thanks, Liz. All the, any discussion, further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. And now we'll talk about the tax anticipation note. Brian?
At the edge of the table, I distributed some materials so that you can see the, we had the deadline for this proposal come all the way until today at noon, just to try to get the best competition. But let me just review what it is that we're talking about. Fairly standard practice for school districts and other municipals that as we wait for tax revenues to come in from the state, which is twice a year, we have bills to be paid so that we normally look for a line of credit or a tax anticipation note to give us that cash upfront, and then we pay for it over time or at the end certainly. There's a couple of mechanisms to go. You can look to try to invest the spread, the cost to borrow versus the cost to invest, or you can just go with a line of credit and draw as you need and do it that way. Last year and again this year, it's the recommendation that we go with the line of credit, and we go with a bank that's not our primary bank, but is the one that is most competitive for interest rates in that, and that is Union Bank at 1.99% interest. And as we have done this year, we'll have distributions from that line come into our primary bank, which is People's United. People's United, we utilize a sweep account so that we're able to generate about, well, starting July 1, it's 1.75% interest. So our cost to carry on that note for outstanding draws is going to be less than a quarter of 1%. So it's going to be fairly minimal. I hope that as we get more feet underneath us and more of attraction hold, we can start to enjoy taking advantage of an arbitrage and that spread between borrow and invest. But right now, there's honestly a little bit more priorities and other projects, and our total cost or hurt to this is really minimum at that, less than a quarter of 1%. So the recommendation is to go with the Union. And I've put together a motion at the bottom, and I have the paperwork here if the board does choose to approve the services.
Questions?
Do we have to, in the motion, do we have to approve who has to sign these? Or mention the board's signatures are needed? It's a majority of a board, I think.
So I have approved the note, the bank resolution, and the tax certificate as provided by Union Bank. So that would be the approval of the board, and then the signatures are almost like our warning to the public is it's, it's the minutes that will have the most binding action.
Okay. Brendan?
Brian, for the .24% borrowing costs, is that something we accommodate for in our budget?
Yeah.
And have we budgeted the right amount to cover those costs over the course of the year?
We have. And because we're also, you know, this year, what we found was that our cash flow is really robust, you know, as we're just still trying to get used to having a district and how the ins and outs are going. So you'll see, and you could see in the last quarter, but as we report, we have significantly more generated interest than we had anticipated. So that's offsetting some of the costs as well. So as we hold cash on hand, one, we're not necessitated to draw all the amount that we have authorized, and two, we're generating far more generated interest than we anticipated.
Okay. Kim?
The line that we're approved for, Brian, it's just as we're drawing on it, we're getting charged.
Yes, it's for the draw.
It's not $6 million.
No.
Okay.
Does someone want to make the motion that is printed at the bottom of the page?
Sure. I would make the motion that we accept the recommendation of administration to engage Union Bank for the purposes of securing a $6 million non-revolving line of credit in anticipation of the receipt of taxes during next fiscal year, FY 2018-19, and approve the tax anticipation note, banking resolution, and tax certificate as provided by Union Bank.
Great. Any further discussion? If not, all this in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Okay, great. Thanks. All right, we'll move on to our favorite subject, transportation. Brian's favorite subject, too.
Yes, it is. Well, over the last 13 days. So we last got together and provided an update on the 5th of June, and so wanted to give some further latest information as we go on. So one of the things that's happened over the course of time is that we've gotten some great feedback. I probably have received upwards to about 150 contacts directly. We've also received a number of inputs in through social media and some through our general website. So that what I thought I would do is talk some about the themes and give some responses to that. One of the key themes, and it's put at the top because it came up probably most frequently, is people pointing out that there's a real big difference between a radius distance versus a walking distance. And though we had debates on whether we call that as the crow flies circle, or big giant circle, or radius circle, generally, it was acknowledged that there's a big difference. And I agree. And we've talked pretty extensively about this and began to go in and model changing that to walking distance to all schools. I think that that has the purest intent of what we said and certainly didn't establish a half-mile radius with the idea that somebody might have to walk two miles on roads or paths to be able to access that half-mile. So we've incorporated that good feedback already. We also heard a number of people point out that there's some streets and neighborhoods and areas that don't currently have pedestrian infrastructure. And I would totally agree with that, that what we were trying to do is identify a future state so that we could have some focus. One of the things often that's happened is as we've talked about changing transportation or reimagining it, it's been an all or nothing kind of part, or this pursuit of only perfection, where we think that by having this dialogue and starting it off with really pinpointing some streets and areas within our communities, that maybe we could make and leverage some work towards those. We also know that there's not going to be any way that we can change certain roads. I mean, we're not going to, there is not the plan right now to have people, you know, spend a lot of time walking down a median strip of a road. So we're, we'll also be intelligent. There needs to be a pedestrian path, something that's reasonable and safe for any kind of walking distance to happen on it. Parents understand limiting alternatives, but need more flexibility. So I had a lot of good conversations and back and forth with people that understand that, they can understand how we can tax the system when there are three or four different pickups in the course of a week and three or four different drop-offs in the course of a week. And can understand how that, you know, that type of dynamic ridership can also test some of our safety and some of our awareness of who's on the bus, who should be on the bus, and which days and so forth. So while it's agreed that limiting it some, people want to make sure that there is a good amount of flexibility for different parents or grandparents or childcare providers. Kindergarten and first graders shouldn't be walking to school. So I heard this a few times coming to us, and I think, I think it has been certainly within the junction, it has been the longtime practice, that with proper infrastructure and planning, our youngest students absolutely can walk to school. It's always a choice, but you know, there has been that feeling that with the planning and the infrastructure, we have the crossing guards and others. So I don't think that it's a blanket statement that they can't or shouldn't, but I think we have to be planful and intentional with regards to it. And certainly, we have people that, you know, that there are occurrences where people literally live across the street from a school or so forth, so. Continuing the feedback, regular riders should be based on consistent use and not set number of days a week. So if you recall, one of the procedures was that you needed to be a regular rider, you needed to be three days a week at a minimum. And people said, "That doesn't really work on how we use our busing, that we may have somebody that rides five days a week, just in the morning, and none in the afternoon." We may have the opposite. There may be people that ride morning and afternoon, three days a week, but not every season because they may participate in some kind of club or activity. So we understand that that makes sense, and we need to work on the new draft or the procedures to try to loosen that up. Again, what we're trying to do is not just create barriers, we're trying to create that efficiency, that safety, that effectiveness in the transportation. And we know that as we serve the needs of some, it can become at the cost of many, you know, that it starts to, when we're running a route and that route has 20% of the riders that occasionally show up to ride, that route's that much longer, you know, it just is, just time passes. Moving away from door-to-door stops should be supported with technology for riders and parents. So I had a number of good conversations, and I totally agree that we have to look at technology and apps for improving connectivity for riders and parents. Is that, there's just a, I mean, it's 2018. People should, you know, if you need to walk down to a bus stop, you should have a general idea that the bus is on the way or not, or just left. So we need to, we need to start to incorporate that technology into our transportation system so that people can do it, and we need to also, you know, provide greater connectivity on the buses for our riders. Depending upon the age, they may have their own technology to be able to alert parents that they're coming, or they're behind a flag person on Route 15 yet again. Concern transportation will impact clubs and activities. So I heard this come up a few times where, and I think also change in times, this has been a concern. It's certainly not our intention on that. We, you know, we don't see an impact, partly just from maybe a really loose assumption that other districts are doing this and that they have robust clubs and sports, that our, you know, our sports teams actually play and compete with. So there feels like that sense that this should be able to work out, but we're doing more research as we model the different routes and so forth.
I think Kevin's actually waiting for Essex Middle School for the exact kind of time.
Yeah.
So once we get the bus routes, and then to rethink that.
Yeah.
He definitely wants to work with it, but.
Yeah. And then changing times and practices is inconvenient and sensitive to parents, and we totally understand that. I mean, change is, from the very beginning, when we started in March, talking about start and stop times, just the idea of the change becomes the known inconvenience, the anticipated inconvenience, opposed to the, you know, the plenty of inconveniences that we've just gotten used to, you know, that we all know that day at the end of the summer when school starts and we forget that we're not supposed to go through five corners or down Route 15 by the town offices, we're like, ah, this is the day. So, and then we adjust. So we hear that, and it's certainly not the intention. We want to try to be hearing people's ideas to improve what we're trying to do. Staffing update. So we've hired a new transportation manager. So this was a position that was initially conceived in 2017 for anticipation of the 18 budget. It was decided not to fill the position at that point in time. So we're resurrecting that idea to bring somebody in. What's really exciting is this new candidate that starts on July 1st has nearly a decade of public transportation experience with CCTA, Green Mountain Transit, and so forth. Significant driver recruitment experience and success, experience with grants and stakeholders, worked with public schools to meet transportation needs in Burlington, and then also is a former residential instructor for students with learning disabilities. So comes with a real good base of service and student-first and student-focused, but also with a huge part of knowledge that not a lot of schools get to tap in really looking at a public transport system. So the big part was that feedback that we got to move from circles to walking paths. So I'm going to just walk through, we'll see how this plays on the big screen. But this is where we were at, and this slide, I had probably like a quarter of all the emails said, "And on Slide 9," which apparently this is Slide 9, people were looking at it, and again, rightfully so. I mean, it, you know, it doesn't take too long to take a look at this map and say, "Yeah, I understand that by air, I can get there in a mile and a half, but that's not how the roads go." So what we want to do is nix this idea and move more to a basis where in like Essex Elementary, which is a K2, would be a half-mile radius, and I'll blow this up a little bit. So the outside circle is the big circles that we're working off of, that radius. The inside kind of blob is a path basis. So, and this is a good example of where we need to look at this in a basis of what makes logical sense for pedestrians today, though recognize that we're also trying to shoot towards a future state. So, you know, for instance, in this neighborhood, there is a good amount of infrastructure for pedestrians. There may not be a current practice to ensure that that's all plowed by a certain time of day. So infrastructure, but not consistently accessible. Opposed to something like going up Route 128 here, you know, that road has no infrastructure and most likely never will. I mean, that's a challenging road in some places already. So, you know, this is not a sense in day one that this works in every situation, but when we start working with our municipal partners and we start thinking about this as a community, where can we start to leverage our needs towards the benefit of all taxpayers? And where can we create pedestrian corridors within our community? Because we do have, we have a dual intention right now, and that is to introduce quality, safe, efficient school transportation and be trying to promote a pedestrian lifestyle. I mean, that was, the board spent a long time with the Health Department really saying, like, "Don't throw everything out here. You've got a 144-year track record of a pedestrian school district that actually could be merged and blended with a district that has a long history of transport door-to-door." And that's, that is the grand experiment right now. Yep?
Ryan, is it, I guess I'm trying to remind myself of the phased approach. Are we talking about instituting new routes and radiuses for the existing Essex Town bus system as well?
Yes.
So that'll all happen in the fall at the same time?
Yep. Yep. So in Hayawatha, K3, also a half-mile, you know, this was another, this was one that was pretty clear, is that when you start to look at that street half-mile versus the radius half-mile, there are definitely some kids that now end up becoming transport. Next one is Summit. Summit is pretty close to street end by the circle, but, you know, I also know that it starts to leave out a bunch of the neighborhoods that have a pretty long tradition of having their kids walk to Summit. You know that Summit on Wednesdays does a walking school bus right by Essex Pediatrics, and that's a process that a lot of the kids from the Countryside and Brickyard neighborhoods and from the Pleasant Street neighborhoods congregate there for the walking school bus, which is most of the time supervised by one of the high school sports teams. For founders, founders is one of those that by the time you get out of the school district's property, you're pretty much have walked your distance. You know, there are some aspects there of maybe improving the attractiveness and access and highlighting a little bit better pedestrian, that fosters maybe creating a, you know, deciding where some crossing guards could be there, could be some encouraging aspects to it. You know, all our schools right now have pedestrians that go to them. Every single one of our schools has pedestrians that go to them.
Like riders.
Yeah. So we know that it already exists based upon convenience or style or family interests and so forth, but I think we can do some encouraging more by adding better infrastructure and crossing guards. Fleming, Fleming's very much the same thing, half-mile, just very much like radius. It really gets that core of Essex Junction, not so much the neighborhoods and so forth. Albert D. Lawton, this one gets to be pretty different. So here's the large radius that goes almost all the way up to the top of Countryside, goes over towards the fairgrounds, but when you start to look at that, that one mile walking radius, it really starts to change it around some. So that one, you can really see where it starts to change some. And then Essex Middle School, again, this is, this was probably one of the ones that people from Essex Middle School were really like, "Wow, what's the plan here? What's happening?" Because that radius is so large, but again, coming out of some of the roads and then back around, you really cut off a lot of that geographical area, all down here in Allen-Martin Parkway, all those were within the radius before, but, you know, some of these neighborhoods are well over a mile and a half to almost two miles of walking, so. Now, we've also got to figure out where there's, you know, existing paths that work, and maybe we develop some of those in a more systematic way. And then finally, the high school. So the high school has the largest radius, so that's the big circle that comes around, but then when you start to draw in that mile and a half radius for walking paths, you start to get this blob in the middle. So again, the top of Countryside, over by Pinecrest, in the Fairgrounds neighborhood, down in Cascade, in that area, are all transport areas. We still feel pretty confident that all these transport areas are going to be able to be served by existing routes coming into the high school. We have routes coming into the high school from the Islands from Georgia and two from Westford that currently serve us. So we feel pretty confident that with a pretty modest rerouting, that we can start to provide reliable and safe transportation out into these areas, these Cascade areas and the Countryside area. Procedures and operating practices. So we got rid of the radiuses. This was the chart we showed before, half-mile, mile, mile and a half. Got rid of the radiuses and went for the paths. That definitely increased the number of students that would be eligible for transportation, but we still feel confident that it doesn't change the total amount of routes because we're also, though we can have no idea projecting ridership right now in a community like Essex Junction, we feel that it would be hard to imagine it being off the charts in comparison to national averages and other places that are there. You know, it's, you usually don't have a spike that drops off. You usually have either a hockey stick where people adopt it and start to use it and they find that it works, or a slow adoption over time where it happens sort of within the flow of the family, opposed to everyone saying, "Oh, this is the coolest thing. We now have a bus we can get on, and let's do that," and then have a drop-off. We're also looking to try to, we're continuing to hold in looking at these earliest AM arrivals at 45 minutes, though it's not ideal for a number of reasons. It seems to be ideal for trying to figure out transportation for clubs and activities and music and so forth in that 6, 8, 9, 12. There's interest at the 4, 5 level to do the same. And again, we're, you know, we've got, we've got really high participation in some of those clubs, but it's a percentage of the overall student population. And then out of that percentage, we know there's a percentage of those that won't ride the bus. So we start to work on fractions of fractions here, but we're changing in and So, we start to work on fractions of fractions here, but we're changing an entire system globally to meet that. So, we've, we're just trying to go back and forth as far as which, which priority are we trying to solve for.
Brendan.
Are we able to predict the average rider time, or will we not know that until we actually...
So, we put a cap of designing routes at fifty minutes. I know right now, routes in the Junction are at twenty-seven, thirty-one on average. We can tight, we're gonna, we anticipate we'll be able to shorten what has, you know, we anticipate that we, that we have some room to maybe shorten what has been some of the longer routes in Essex Town by doing some of the separations and doing some of the consolidated stops and so forth, but still modeling those.
And this earliest AM arrival makes me wonder, in some cases, are we essentially canceling out the change in the start time to make some of the starts later?
So...
Are we basically losing time?
So, a lot of, I mean, and certainly you can see this happen a lot of times in nine, twelve, in the research and in the white papers of the schools that have moved to the later starts, they've, a lot of schools have created a period zero. So, it's like a, it's like a class before school starts, and what the research shows is if that class is based in creativity, physical expression, activity, those kinds of things, the brain science is that you have a better result going into the day. You can't, it's, it's not a good time to do like, you know, chemistry lab or calculus or, because that's, that's where the research shows, it's like, that kind of cognitive thinking is just not happening in adolescence at that time of the day. So, can you do it and does it negate it? It's about, it's sort of the depends, it's what you put into that place. So, if it starts to become a place where people are doing clubs, student government, possibly even gym or practice, you know, it all has possibilities of adding to the benefit. But we're, again, I think we have to really dive into that forty-five minutes right now is really trying to provide bus transportation to school in time for an activity or a club or a lesson, and again, what is the ridership in that? You might be changing an entire system globally to, to really benefit only, you know, maybe less than fifteen percent of your students, but now a hundred percent are potentially impacted.
Because I think, as we talked about, the change in start times, I think we sort of made a statement that we're not changing the start times to accommodate a bus schedule, we're changing the start times to make the decisions that are right for that age group. And so, does that, does this, as you're putting this together, does that seem to be something that can be resolved, or is that gonna ultimately kind of conflict naturally just based on the fact that we can't bend time and space yet?
Well, you know, we did, we figured that out, but we put that aside for a second. I, I think we're, we continue to have layers of what we're trying to solve to, and I, I think we still staying pretty strong to the idea, we're not gonna build schedules around transportation. But, as we start to look at schedules, you know, places like Essex Elementary and Founders are extending their day to another twenty-five minutes, another thirty minutes, as we, as we look at schedules, there's a whole nother series of priorities to look at, and it's really that sense of trying to make sure we lose nothing, you know, and trying to figure out how we still accommodate that, that overflowing cup, how do we make that work now within a change of school schedule, school start and end times? So, I mean, I would, I guarantee you, you know, the first three weeks of school, I mean, I'm sure you've already, I'll realize this, but I'll say it out loud, the first three weeks of school will be just like they usually are. It will be chaotic, it will be clumsy, there'll be things that we can find to improve upon, and some of it will be that sense of like, what does it really feel like to be doing what we're doing? People at Essex Elementary have no idea, they don't even recall the time in which kids were dismissed from class and actually went home at that moment. You know, it's thirty-five, forty minutes of waiting around for a bus right now. That's gonna be thirty-five minutes of instructional time. So, like, we don't, to know what it feels like is gonna be a matter of experiencing it.
Thanks.
Yep.
Al.
Just a note, last winter, it was brought to my attention that the town is using four-foot snowplows, oh, sidewalk plows, and there are a number of sidewalks in the town that are three foot wide.
Hmm.
And what happens is, it get raised up, ice and snow is not really removed down to the sidewalk area. So, you need to keep that in mind as well, too, because the conditions are not clear.
Right.
And what ends up happening is people walk in the road.
Yeah. Yep.
We have to work with the town.
Yeah.
And the village.
And the village.
And the village, yeah.
Kim? Um, I was also thinking in terms of partners, neighborhood partners, because as you look to how far people could have to walk to their stop, there are neighborhoods that would do well to be reminded that either it's your responsibility to keep your sidewalk shoveled in front of your property, that might be a covenant that isn't our neighborhood and it's not adhered to generally.
Yep.
And so, the importance of that and thinking about where there are neighborhood associations that would be a good resource to be connecting with sooner than December snow.
Yeah.
Especially if we know that that's not an area that would receive municipal priority necessarily.
Eli.
I had a question about way back in like the first slide, the affirming that kindergartners and first graders can walk to school, which I totally understand in the Junction, but what I don't understand is the last time that we did this presentation, it was asserted that kindergartners and first graders could not ride the bus to a home and be dropped off unless there was a parent present. Those things seem to not be logically in order.
I mean, it's a current practice that when you're transporting a student to, at that age kindergarten, and it's been a longstanding practice in Essex Town and other districts, that when you transport there, you are releasing them from the schoolhouse at the point they get off the bus, and without any assurance that there's a guardian there, where in pedestrian districts, you release from the schoolhouse. So, I think we have to reconcile that. I mean, it was, it was to have an interest to say, we have it happening and we have it happening, and those two things are a conflict, and how do we work on it? But I think that statement of that, there's just no way that they can or ever should, just feels like, at least on an anecdotal basis, we can all agree that sometimes it makes sense.
Yeah. I mean, it's definitely a buy permission thing in the village, but perhaps there could, if that's okay, then it should also be okay for parents to give permission that their smiling face doesn't have to be present when the drop off happens from the bus. And if we can't take that step, then we need to rethink whether we're okay letting them walk in the village.
Yeah. No, that's a good point. We can only expect one direction. Right now, it feels like we're expecting in two different directions.
So, is that drop off, oh, okay. Well, you want somebody to be home, I can certainly understand it when it's not the parent's house, you know, when you're dropping off somewhere else.
Yeah, I would say that it, it's, it's a good amount of our transportation events occur with a rider that we can't drop off and we have to bring back to school or bring to a central office or track someone down. I would say that it's especially, who's, third, third of the issues?
Yeah.
Yep.
So...
Okay.
Does this model include dropping off, you know, there's picking up from, say, the child's home and then dropping off at after-school care, that may be in a totally different bus route? So, this has also been taken into consideration?
Yeah, that's, and that's the, the current practice in that kids getting dropped off at an after-school program or daycare or even a, just a supervising adult is that at that age group, they're required to be present to be dropped off. And we put a lot of onus on the bus drivers to know all these changes, because, I mean, as a former parent in Essex Town, you know, a lot of times it would be like, well, why don't you go home on Brendan's bus today? Because that kind of worked for us as parents. There wasn't a lot of, you know, I don't think we had a plan, I'm not sure who in the school district knew our plan, you know, when we did that, so.
Okay. That's okay.
I mean, for the kindergartners and the first graders who I know do walk to school, none of them that I have ever seen or know of wa, made that walk to school to like Hiawatha, for example, without a parent.
Yeah.
So, I mean, that's just what's happening.
There are some tiny people who walk across train tracks to Summit.
That's true.
I haven't, my, I mean, I'm always, I can only speak for what I've seen in Hiawatha, but I've never seen a kindergartner age student who's been going to Hiawatha, and I've been pretty active about looking at that sort of thing, because everyone knows how vocal I've been about getting the younger elementary school kids. So, I've kept a pretty good eye out. I'm certainly not saying it doesn't exist, you know, as you probably experience it more getting your kids to Summit than I would at Hiawatha, which has a really kind of close neighborhood all around it.
Yeah.
But for the most part, I think the parents are there and they realize that.
Yeah.
Hey, you know, I need to walk with my three-year-old if they're gonna be getting to school because I'm not a dummy.
Yep.
And the second question I had was, first question, because that was more statement, the reach out for getting the town involved, would that be something that was gonna fall under the transportation manager's purview, or are you guys gonna be doing that as administrators? I'm just wondering who's going to be doing this reach out?
I mean, I would imagine that that's, that's building a much deeper and sort of codependent relationship with our municipal government. I mean, I think that, I think it's probably on all layers, the boards, administration, transportation. Bruce Murdaugh, who oversees crossing guards, you know, we have a great, unbelievably good relationship with Essex PD, you know, we continue to have them posted, they, they man five corners for us, which is great. So, I think it's all layers.
Okay.
So, one of the things that came up from the feedback is to build that electronic system for parents to make changes up to three times a year. So, we'll have a ridership survey, which Ben is working on right now, we'll push that out in July, but we'll build a system, we'll build a system where people can go on, a lot of people just say that either the rhythm of their work or their lives or the student's life changes enough that sort of three times seem to make sense. The ridership, instead of three or more days, it's three more times per week, AM, PM, or both, that should open it up and people can start to, you know, we want, we want anyone that's gonna be consistent to be counted. Our problem right now is that we run a route to pick up ten kids up the end of a dirt road and none of those kids really plan on driving or riding. So, you know, we just wanna be consistent, so we make sure that we're doing good service. And then, right now, we had one regular route and one alternative, I brought that up to two right now, part of it's gonna have to just kind of see what happens when we do the first ridership survey to just see, because I, I think what we're gonna have is a small percentage that has a very large number and the majority that, you know, don't have that large number. So, next steps, we're working, continue to work on these procedures and new operating practices through this month. We're gonna execute a revised contract with our transportation vendors in June, bringing them over to the language of the EWSD contract and, which incorporates a lot of necessities for things like GPS and Wi-Fi in every bus and all those various things that have been in contract, but we can really start to manage. We hired the transportation manager and onboarding in July, we're recruiting drivers, really feel like, you know, one of the places that we have to have some uptake on driver recruitment has gotta be our own staff and this community. There wasn't a single resident of Essex Junction, Essex Town, or Westford that even inquired about being a bus driver in the last time we recruited, not a single one. And, and out of all of the other routes that these people say is when they serve Northfield or when they serve Linden or something, they, I mean, they count on people that live in the community, that know the streets and know the kids and have an inkling, so we've gotta have some uptake in our, in our community. Or, I think the board starts to really understand to the degree the community wants this to be happening. So, and then, system design, we're gonna continue to model and optimize routes going into two full-day intensives with the software, myself and the consultant, and then we'll be bringing the new manager onboard with training at the end of July. We'll conduct the survey, announce routes to families and schools July and again in August, because I'm sure it's gonna be like getting your school schedule, is that everyone's gonna wanna drop add at some point in time before we go. And then, planning a community meeting for the week of August thirteenth to, to just basically have some kind of dialogue and thought we could work with some of our, our facilitators in the community to plan a time where people could vent and, and give input and maybe come up with some better ideas.
Questions, comments, Brendan?
Ryan, are we, how will we accommodate families on that ridership survey who don't have access or facility for electronic?
So, the key part with the rider survey is it's the, the key element is to opt out for, for ridership. There is an assumption that until somebody gets to school or through registration, I mean, most of the time, people have been telling schools what their various daycares and providers are, so we have that mechanism to sort of catch the, the riding but complicated people. So, but we won't be excluding someone from ridership because we didn't get a survey back from them. The key part is that, like, I mean, we sell hundreds of parking passes for the high school. There's a good chance that a number of those students are gonna be driving to school and aren't gonna be on the bus. We have no way of collecting that information, so we ride, we drive routes every day to pick them up. When we know, you know, when they could just tell us like, no, I'm good, I'm, I'm not doing that. And that's really the ridership survey, and also to start to see where some of our complications are.
So, it's likely that in the initial rollout, as the, you know, weeks progress, more people could potentially opt out as they start to understand, understand what's available or, oh, oh, now I can raise my hand or whatever.
It's nicer weather.
Yeah. Yeah, and they tell me November's your, your spike.
So, our procedure is to take questions from the board first and then I'll go to the audience. Kim?
I just, I think as well, often families will opt out because the ride takes so long, and I think there's gonna be some sort of regression analysis that's gonna have families making decisions when they have a better sense of the amount of time spent either on the bus or in waiting, and that could be very different than had even been the case in Essex Town before. So, there will likely be some fluctuation for that.
Yeah.
That's a good one. Are there questions or comments from board members? Brian, I, I could be remembering wrong, but I thought that one of the public engagements that you had told folks they would have their routes by the end of school.
Mm-hmm.
Are we doing something to communicate that that's not the case? Aside from this?
I mean, there's, this, we pushed it out, there was, every single person received the last transportation update in an email.
Oh, okay.
It's on our website, we've been, you know, as I said, we've been pretty active and engaging with people, reaching out to us. Colin hasn't come asking yet with regards to that, but I think, you know, we did send out an email with a link to the last transportation update to every family in the district.
Great, I didn't know.
One of those on social media also.
Okay. Okay, you have a question? Could you identify yourself?
Yeah, I'm Stephen Roth, so from Essex Town. I exchanged a couple emails with you, Brian, too, and thanks for the response. I guess a couple of comments and questions. One is, you've talked about the phased approach, but what's not really clear is what's going into effect in August and what's, you know, two or three years down the road.
Yep.
What might impact us? Um, you know, there's been a couple of questions too about the infrastructure piece of, you know, the power of the sidewalks, the power of the streets.
Yeah.
I guess, you know, the question is, can you quantify that as the, you know, which ones are, you know, walkable because they're powered on a regular basis?
Yep.
Which ones aren't and how does that kind of impact your, you know, process? And then on a, on a couple of your pictures, you know, the slides up there, you know, you're splitting streets in half.
Yeah.
So like, if you live two houses this way, can you walk five houses this way and get that bus? And is that, are you trying to prevent people from running or is that something that comes out in the survey? Because we fit into like, when you mentioned it earlier, uh, we drop my daughters off at school, but depending on after-school activities, you know, if they're in a bunch of clubs, they're in a bunch of sports.
Yeah.
You know, if they're not going that day, they take the bus home. Right, if they are, then they might not take the bus for, you know, a couple of weeks, kind of.
Right.
If you fall into that, could potentially fall in that category as the non-rider and.
Yep.
I guess one of your comments there was if capacity's there or not. What, I guess, arrangements do you make if the bus is full? You know, what does that student do? What, you know, is there somebody at the school to call a parent cell or something like that and make arrangements so that, you know, they're not, I think it's, it's a cold weather state, so that's the other thing.
Yeah.
There are days of negative degrees and raining that if you're now on that walking route.
Yep.
You know, in Essex, it's, you know, mean.
Yeah. So, I, I think the phased approach, um, we're gonna see a good deal of the phasing happening in Essex Town just because there, one is it's so different, it hasn't happened. So there isn't an expectation of the infrastructure or the services to be there. Um, I think we can, you know, what's interesting when we do this, we have every single student for every single school geo-tagged and we can then start to look on where we split a street or don't go onto a street or so forth. We can see right by student name and grade whether there's anybody there, you know. And so, there's, there's places where we can just be smart and that's why, you know, that's a little bit of a blob that kind of goes there. It has a buffer of a couple of hundred yards so that people don't have that sense of surgical precision. Because if we're gonna drive by somebody's house, then it may just make sense to grab them. If we're not gonna go into a neighborhood because there's nobody that lives there that goes to that school, you know, those kinds of things. Um, so there's a, there's some elements of it that's, that really work down into a very fine detail level of who's gonna be impacted. And I, and I've been trying to devise this for months now on how to be able to, to develop versions that are some percent of progress, sort of thing. But what I'm struck with is that this is a system that needs to be fill- fully built in order to determine how it's broken, to determine how it needs to get fixed. Like it just, it, like, there's just no way to go halfway and then be able to say, oh, okay, we're on track. You need to kind of do the entire building of the route. Uh, and we're starting from scratch because the software and the routes hadn't been managed electronically by the system for a good two or three years and we're building brand-new ones for Essex Junction. So, some of those details are gonna be worked out. I'm not too worried about this temporary rider versus regular rider because even in our best routes, we're at under seventy percent capacity. And that seventy percent capacity, we designed routes to be at seventy percent of the riders. So, like, we're not even getting close to it. Uh, maybe an after-school late bus, when a sports team gets dismissed early, we can get slammed sometimes, but otherwise, we're not even close at capacity.
I was gonna mention one other area that was brought to my attention about a year and a half, two years ago. North Road in Westford. It has a steep incline from the drop-off point on the main Milton Road. It's my understanding, what I was told was there is no turnaround at the end and it's a grade that is twenty or twenty-five percent for a half a mile. That is, and no sidewalks. That is an area of, of concern. You might wanna take a look at how many children are in that particular area because that road is hazardous and during the winter.
Yep. Well.
Did you get to ask on your questions?
Yeah.
Okay. Any other questions or comments, Kim?
Do we expect, Brian, that a bus will be stopping at multiple schools?
Yeah, there'll certainly be buses that have multiple schools on them. Um, we're trying to, at this point in time, everything's being designed so that we are clustering the same grade levels. So that you would see a, a ride for, again, for something like Essex Junction, you'd see a K-five and then a six-eight, and then the high schools would get transported separately.
Anything else for tonight? So, Brian, since we're not gonna see each other again till, like, August seventh, if there are major developments in the meantime, will you email board members?
Certainly.
Okay. I think that would be very helpful. Okay, great. Let's move on to the superintendent evaluation, um, instrument process in time. So, the superintendent evaluation task team met. I think you received a copy of those minutes in one agenda. They were on there, they should, that we'll approve our own minutes. Um, as I said in the email that I sent to you last night, I unfortunately could not find the place where I wrote down notes in the fall when we used this tool for the first time. And I know people had suggestions for changing it. Um, the one big one that I did remember was that standard three was a really, I'm a picture of policy pieces and personnel pieces. And there was a strong recommendation that we split those out. So we did do that. And we made one minor change in standard one in the language around, um, safety and security so that it, um, really focuses on positive school, school climate, including school safety and security. Um, so we'll come back to the instrument in a second. The process that we talked about, we decided that we wanted to include a self-evaluation from Beth in the process, um, that we'd like done and sent to us before we do our evaluation. Sometimes it's good to be reminded what has actually happened. Although we're gonna do a piece of that tonight as well. So, um, Beth is gonna have that done by the end of June. We'll send out all the materials for the evaluation, um, as soon as Beth finishes that piece. And we'll actually, I'll ask you to, um, send me those materials probably by August first so that I can put them together for our discussion at the August seventh meeting. Um, yeah, so that's the process, that's the timeline. Did any, does anybody, I'm sure when you sit down to use the instrument, you're gonna remember some things you didn't like about it. But did anyone think of anything in looking at it in this packet? Okay. Questions, comments? You okay with the process? Okay with the timeline? Um, okay. So, tonight, we're gonna move on now to, um, have Beth update us on her goals. If you recall, a lot of her goals for the rest of this year extend into next year. But, um, not that. So, we wanted her to spend a few minutes tonight talking about what has been accomplished or will be by the end of June. Um, and that's what, these are pieces we should be thinking about as we do the formal evaluation, along with all the regular standards. So, Beth, I'll turn to the routine.
So I did send you the document and, um, that has the goal and then it has objectives for the goals. And I did not send it to Nick and Grace. Can you s- look, I didn't, I was actually doing it remotely, not in my office. Um, that would be great, thank you, Liz. So it has objectives under each goal. And then the next row that I added is the evidence and that will continue. Because you printed it earlier. Okay, you can share with me.
Okay.
Um, so the next row is evidence and then the timeline. So I put the evidence within. And this evidence I will continue to add to as I go through. Um, and you have it as a Google Doc, so you can at any time look at as the evidence gets more. So hopefully this will be a very long row or columns. So the first one, to establish a vision that permeates the district and guides our work. I think that I have shared, I actually started to put a presentation together and I thought, I have shared everything in presentations, like, throughout this process. So I think that this is why I chose just to do it this way. Um, with the vision, we had a lot of data. As you remember, the community, um, conversations, we had the themes, we had the four words from the community, we had the staff, values and beliefs, we had the leadership values and beliefs. We had a lot of student voice in that with the leadership, um, retreat and through Voices for Education. So that's what, um, that's how everyone was involved in that vision writing. So, and that was to, the first objective was to work with stakeholders and gather all that feedback. And it was adopted. And then, um, the second objective, to create an equity plan or as we're calling our continuous improvement plan. We've changed the name in our own district, even though we have to call it a continuous improvement plan by law, but we're calling it an equity plan to make sure that we get five areas of equity in there. The physical integration, the social and emotional engagement, opportunities to learn, instructional excellence, and engaged and inspired learners. So Amy and I, mainly Amy is the one that presented to you just a bit ago. I did link that presentation in there so that you have that to go back to when you're looking at, um, the goals. So that her presentation is right there. But in that presentation, a lot is in this plan because it starts with the vision, there's the theory of action, there's the student outcomes, values and aspirations that came from all that vision work. So that's, if you remember, that's how it, um, was linked altogether. Also, the conference that we went to, um, at the professional development conference, Building Equity, and we went with the members of the leadership team, not the entire leadership team, but that also had a lot to do, so we did our vision work using, um, a book, had a book read, Building Equity, and then going to listen to the authors. That work is continuing over into the next column where, um, develop professional learning structure, that collaborative time. So as the objective to develop that professional development time or the collaborative time. So it's meaningful and consistent. From that book, we're having and hoping that the authors are available to come work with our district and our leadership team and some teacher leaders, um, directly with them and then end the year with all the authors and the whole entire staff. So, we're hoping that we will still do, the plan is to still do a book read. And I say hoping because we're hoping for grant money to pay for the books. So we would like to read Building Equity as an entire district. That's how much we enjoyed it. So the implementation plan, this is really about our PLCs and the work that we have done as a leadership team. So if you click on that, I, uh, I can't get to that, but, um, Kim, you wanna click on the blue? Can you? Oh, he didn't? So we defined what a professional learning community is and we thought it was really important that, um, in the beginning of the year, we will share what the professional learning communities are. Um, and we decided this year to really focus on, focus, or this coming year, to really focus on classroom teachers and, um, professional, the licensed educators in the district. Because that is the, um, what research says with their teacher efficacy can really move that system for, a system forward. With, um, aligning curriculum and looking at assessments, meeting, um, regularly for that. And then sharing expertise. So that's what the teacher efficacy is about and the number-one way to move, um, learning, uh, learning environment forward. The four conditions for a PLC is to have a team have a common purpose of some kind, a shared reason for why they're in the room together. There is a structure, there's an agenda and schedule. All, um, our leadership team has been using, meeting-wise, it's a type of schedule. You, I mean, a type of an agenda, you have seen it because I've shared it, um, in, in different times. But it's a very structured agenda. We've been using them throughout the district, which is pretty cool because we, I, we started, Brian and I started that this year modeling that and using that agenda. Um, and now teachers are using them, um, principals are using them with teachers. So we're saying that that agenda structure, um, should be, will be used. There will also be a website that the teachers will use to, to post their agendas and their meeting minutes so anyone can get into any grades, PLC, and see that the work that they're doing, which is pretty cool. Um, and then to create common formative assessments around the shared questions to inform next instructional steps. And then also to share best practices. So that's our intent of the professional learning communities. And then the, another question that the do fours, where the professional learning communities come from, um, where the authors say that we will look at student assessments, data, and student work and then to be able to identify gaps within learning. So when the third grade teams are together across the district, they can create some common assessments, bring in student work, and then develop really next steps in instruction. And I've been a part of PLCs that that's really engaging, great work. And it, um, you really look at your own practice. And I think helping us to get to know one another in those PLCs, we'll be reading that book, Building Equity, which I think will help those conversations along for all students. Also with, um, well, I won't get that to you yet. And then, I won't jump ahead. And then, um, how will we respond when they don't learn? And we've defined, um, ways that teachers can work on that and administrators, not just teachers. We also have an implementation plan. So we're committed to year one, really having, uh, the collaborative time being very intentional. Um, the union actually came to me and said this needs to be intentional. Can you pull up the, if you go to the implementation plan? Yeah. Thanks. And then the second page down is the. So the teachers are also asking that that time be very intentional, which is great. I'm glad that they're saying that's needed because we are too, so we're on the same page for that. Um, the PLCs at the school level will, they'll be flexible in a way that the school leader can decide and the teachers can decide on who's at those PLCs. Whether, some schools are smaller, like, we'll say Westford. You're, they're, the vertical teams, they might have to have like a K-two team instead because a K teacher doesn't have anybody to meet with. Um, and the same with Summit, too, it's small enough, and Hiawatha. So those schools are working on who can they meet with during the PLC time, where the former town schools are a little larger and they have their PLC, enough in their PLC. Um, when the PLCs are meeting across the district, each of the administrators has taken on a PLC at a grade level so that they will guide those PLCs in the first. PLC at a grade level so that they will guide those PLCs in the first year and guide that work and we will at leadership team make sure that they're aligned and doing very similar things. So this was written by a task team that then was brought to our leadership team, so we worked on that together and then our leadership team adopted this implementation plan.
Beth?
Yep.
So is this, was this implemented this year or is it going to be implemented next year?
It will be implemented next year. So this is the plan. So this will be for the fall and during those Tuesday collaborative times. That's what this will be, when this will be implemented and other times too, if they have time for a PLC. But we're really laying the guidelines for it, the structure, so that we don't want to, if it's not a true PLC and following this, then call it something else, call it a committee. It's not a PLC unless it's following these guidelines. And we've been really, we've had a lot of discussion about that at the leadership team, but we really believe that it's, that's the way to go. Yep, Grace?
Wait, so is it teachers in the same school meeting or is it like teachers teaching the same grade across?
Good question. I don't know if I had the schedule on here. I will, so the next one is the schedule. So they will meet three times a month within their school and then once a month will be district wide, except the high school's going to look a little different because it's the only high school in the district. So eventually, the plan for the high school is that they will begin to meet with the middle school teachers, but after one year of getting PLCs really done well before they expand upon and bring, but we know the promise of merger is to have that alignment, that seamless transition from middle school to high school, that'll help once we have PLCs. And we will be working on that next year, but the following year, we're hoping that we can expand upon those PLCs.
There may be some acceleration in like art or other areas opposed to some of the subject levels of like science and math and so forth, so.
On those district level days, K-12 teachers for art and music will be together, those specialized teachers. So they're really excited about that.
I mean, it's, you wouldn't believe that it could take upwards to three plus months to plan a K-12 meeting of like art, just because every master schedule, every commitment, none of them are designed to support that. So that's part of what this whole element is, is to align ourselves to support that collaborative work so people are meeting in a regular basis to learn from one another.
So.
I have a question.
Yeah, sorry.
When you, this comes to mind is that when you have, let's say, a point for art teacher. So is this Tuesday session going to be part of that point four or is that an additional?
It's important that it is part of the point four and that they're here for it. That's something that will have to be worked out. If you read some of the details, some positions have to be worked out with the principal and they'll have to oversee when they go or maybe it's every other time, maybe it's just the once a month when the district one meets. So that's up to the schedule when they're there, point four. And if they are combining with another school and not in our district, there's not much they can do, but they can get on and read minutes and read the agendas and follow online that way, have a buddy, pick up a buddy that goes to the PLCs. But those are the kinds of things that we've been talking about for months and months with the leadership team. Brian, if you could scroll down to the training plan.
I, I have a quick question.
Oh, sorry.
It's also about scheduling and I had completely forgotten about. How is the Tuesday early release impacting the Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday afternoon, Act 166 pre-K at Summit in Hiawatha?
It's not affecting it at all.
Because it normally ended at three.
Yep, and I think, I think, I hope I'm not misspaking, that they've worked that out with Erin, that it won't and they'll join after that.
Okay.
No.
The second question was, is there adequate time for any training needs for your school leadership to implement, in other words, to implement successfully?
So let's get to the training.
Okay.
That's the next piece that I'm getting to. Good segue, Al. So the training is really important for a PLC and I think we've talked about that before. We have a training that will be happening in our district, August 16th and 17th, that every principal, every administrator will be doing, along with myself, in that joining us will be teacher leaders also, if they have those two days available. So that is being done by Reed Dwyer, who's been working with us for a couple of years and he actually helped with our implementation plan. So he'll be working with us, he will also be working very closely and continue to work closely with the high school as they implement these PLCs also, so he'll be around, which will be helpful and he knows that, the staff well here. And then there'll be some teachers and additional time and learning opportunities to go to the Solution Tree trainings, which are the true de four trainings, the authors that are, happen all over the United States, but we can't afford to send everybody, but we are sending some. And I think that may be the way that the high school will be trained, here and there at different times and go get that training instead of the August from Reed, but we'll follow through.
Why not bring in, why not bring the trainers here?
Because they're really, really expensive, believe it or not. It's less to send people there. I've done that research before. It's like forty grand to have them.
Well, I meant just for the two days.
Yeah, we're not sending everybody that way, but we are sending some. We actually had a few teachers from Summit that couldn't make the August one are going next week and they're using their professional development money that they would have anyways that's in the budget, so.
Good.
Yeah. So the plan is there. It's a pretty structured plan, it's, it's pretty tight. The loose part may be that a school, like I've been working with the high school, it looks different there right now, there to jump into where, where they don't have the district, other district people to meet with and we're going, that path will look a little different, but it's still, they'll still do agendas and all of that. Their leadership team, their admin team at the high school has also said they're going to take on subject areas, so they'll lead them the first year as they train a leader to be with them, similar to what we're doing at the district level. I really want to be a leader, but I have to refrain. I'll just run around and be at PLCs. So the last objective for that is to support principals in instructional leadership. I have been accepted to the national training on national principal supervision and evaluation course, which is, has to do with instructional leadership and my first session is in July, 24th to 27th, very excited. And those are, so some of those goals were to be done by June 2018 is why I'm presenting to you tonight. So the next goal is the student outcomes. I can tell you that I presented these before to you and then we presented them again with Amy when she did the continuous improvement plan. So right now I am looking at Sback scores as they come in. They still have not been, we have not clarified who has taken them and done all that paperwork to, to be public yet. We're hoping that maybe even August 7th, we could present to the board Sback scores and look at, so I've been meeting with Amy and looking at them and we have a shared Google Doc, so I see the update, I was reading them yesterday and looking at them. Can't really get into a lot of detail yet, but we will. And our new Alpine system to hold the data is absolutely amazing. We're really excited about that. So we'll, can't wait to show you in August when all the data's on it. And then the other out, there's a lot of outcomes, I mean, obviously Sback and the common assessments, because we will have the common assessments next year and to show you where the reading and math ones are, but the other ones are, are trickier to figure out how to show you. The personalized learning plans, I can bring you sample of those, so, but we as a leadership team haven't figured out how to measure them. I know what we will use, but I want to clarify and align that. So that, more to come on that. And then goal three, to establish a fiscally responsible budget and oversight for school district.
Before we go on, I was wondering, for like the PLPs, like is there going to be like some kind of way where like students can meet with their guidance counselors to set that up? Because I know like, I think we're supposed to have one, but we don't like use it at all.
Yeah, so we have a new, that's a really good question. We have a new tool that we're going to go with, it's called Bulb, which is really easy for students and teachers to use. We have a lot of work happening this summer around that and then I've been working with admin team and also our person that oversees personalized learning plans, has been working with admin team and teachers at Essex High School. So next year, there will be the implementation and everybody will be doing.
So like through like guidance counselors or more through like advisors?
Through advisors, yeah, which is a better time to be able to do that. And we have, there is a plan and I will bring that in the fall, the implementation plan, how that looks at the middle schools too, like sixth grade is reading, what's that book, Brian, we were looking at the other day, Highly Effective Teens, seven?
Seven Habits of Highly Effective Teens, so it works off the Covey process.
That this whole entire sixth grade are going to read that book and then develop their personalized learning plans around that as a book study, which is pretty cool. And then each grade level has a different implementation. So that plan has been written, it'll be worked on this summer with some teacher leaders and then in the fall, I can present to you where they're, where they're at with PLPs. It's pretty exciting. We've also made somebody who is in our district already and does a lot with data, part-time PLPs, so he'll be here to go and work with schools too, which is great. So the communication with Brian, we meet and continue to meet twice a week. We plan our directors and leadership team meetings together and create those agendas and we also communicate how we're going to communicate out to what's happening. So one of our meetings is really looking ahead and strategic planning and the other one is like the day-to-day, what are we doing, where, what meetings are we in, our supervision and evaluation of the people that we work with. And we're right now working with the directors, we have given them strength-based leadership to read and take the test. So they're getting that data back and then we're meeting with them in July to really play off their strengths and how to support the people they supervise. So that's the work that we're jumping into. It's, it's exciting to work with them. And then the next one is to ensure that state and local standards are being followed. We had a fiscal monitoring in May, we don't have the results of that, but we will let you know. They seemed impressed with our program managers, so anyone who oversees a grant, we were all in that meeting together and they, the state left saying that they were very impressed with them, so. The next one, reporting the revenues, we have been doing that, Brian's been doing that. And then the budget planning, as you know, we have been planning and we will jump in again and start that, that is an ongoing, before we know. Right sizing the district, we've been working with the district management group, we've had three meetings throughout the spring. There's a group of admin that go to those meetings. There's three principals, Brian, myself, HR, curriculum coordinator and the two directors of student support. We have been working on roles and responsibilities. It was one of the areas that the district management group could work with the district. It's also feeds into right sizing the district and then really where clarity is. So we had all these things that we wanted to do with them and we kept coming back to. It's really about roles and responsibilities. So we have a survey, working with them, we created, Brian and I created a, well, the, there's decision points that each administrator will get from the district, actually you're on the list too, I have to choose a board member. So you read a decision and then you say, who do you think in the district is the one that can make that decision? And then you take the survey results and it goes back to the roles and responsibilities. It's pretty interesting work. We started to dig into it at one of our meetings this spring. So we have been going to DMG. And Kim just asked that and I was like, yes, and I'm just going to present it. So then we can use those roles and responsibilities for the next objective, which is really working with business, HR and instructional side of the district to figure that out and define those roles. And it, it is tricky and when it comes to the school level too, because of the district is large, so it's what is the principal's responsibility or role in hiring a parent educator, who gets the say in that? So those are the things we've been kind of struggling with all year, so this is, this will be helpful. And then we did, as you know, offer early retirement incentive and four directors chose to take that and then two will return part-time and then the other two are not returning. And we continue to have conversations through attrition when a retirement comes up, we, especially with support staff within the district, at the district level, we meet and decide with the other directors, is this a support staff? What were their, what were they doing? What are their roles and responsibilities and can they be given to someone else or is it too big of a job? So we keep, we keep doing that every time we have a, somebody leave. Then the last goal, oh, yep.
We had a chance to talk about it when we were doing some planning earlier, but the idea of capturing sort of institutional knowledge of those leaving at the district level through exit interviews or some format that allows for that and didn't know to what extent we thought that might happen or?
Yeah, I, I know and I, I actually keep thinking about that. So we have two coming back part-time, so I don't feel the exit interview, I mean, it could be even done in the fall or whatever. And one other one, we could as a director have, but one of the directors is already gone, so that wouldn't be. We could do it with the one that's leaving, that would be good for both Brian and I and I've been thinking about that, but.
Or even if it were written as opposed to an actual city?
Yeah, I think you'd get more when you actually interview though, because we can dig and probe. So yes, I have one week to do that. To increase my communication with the district and to the Essex-Westford community. So again, we took, which I've talked to you about, well, with the Voices for Education, I think that you know I've been working with them all along and the community conversations that we've had and we've used that work again in the vision. We have adjusted and worked Ben's contract, our communications person, to now expand upon and work with Voices for Education as his, part of his job, which is local money and funded, so that gives it some sustainability to it when the grant goes away. And then something that I did with Voices for Education with Liz was to go to Rhode Island and present at a high school conference, which you knew about. I feel like I'm pretty actively involved, I can't always attend every Voices but for education, but I, I feel like I'm always meeting with them.
Definitely actively involved.
I think one of the things that, it's not in here, but it, maybe it is at some point. One of the other things that Brian and I are doing is bringing Ben in into one of our weekly meetings for 20 minutes or so to talk about what can we, even just to listen to what we're doing, because sometimes I don't think about like, oh yeah, that would be good for people to know, because you just get, you just keep going. So he's been helpful in letting us know what we could put out, all the things we're doing, because you don't think about it, even around our safety and security.
Yep.
After those conversations and we have been doing things, but it doesn't.
Yep.
We just keep going and doing. And then the monthly communications on the website, I haven't sat down with, well, now will be Ben overseeing the website to set that up so that I can get in and do those monthly updates, but I have Ben, my Twitter account, pretty active on that. And then host community conversation forums, as you know, we've had three on the start and stop times, those in, community engagements, which was an average about 20 people at each one of those, some were larger, some were smaller, and then the one safety, and I think it was about 60 people that attended that one. And yeah, then we hope to have more in the fall and to become pretty regular on how those happen. So Martha and Kim and I and Brian have been talking about how to do those and are they before board meetings, do we hook them up? And then we've been talking in Voices about doing them. I threw out some topics that we could have some about, so those will continue to happen. I think they're really beneficial. Emailing to staff and families when we have something, Brian and I- Emailing to staff and families when we have something, Brian and I work with the families and if we have through email and if we have something like transportation start and stop times, things that are really important to get out there or some kind of emergency that happens, to send out as quickly as possible. With staff, before every vacation, I send out an email and wish them a relaxing whatever.
Thank you.
Yeah, yes. I try to acknowledge and thank them before they go away for a few days, which I, people seem to really appreciate. And then also around some other important information, if I hear some scuttlebutt, I try to get at it and send out an email to everybody and try to clarify really what's happening. Then the last one, the continuous professional growth. So, yeah.
Can I ask a question on communication?
Yeah.
Is there an intent or anything that you're going to follow, like we're talking about select boards, trustees, you know, and coordinating and talking about the plowing and the maintenance? Has there been or is there anybody that's going to be doing that or will there be a plan?
Well, it falls under pieces of this too, right? Engaging in the community. I did, after Martha and I met with Evan Teach, I did tell him or let him know that Brian and I would be meeting with him. So I already put that out there. But we will follow through on that. We continue to talk about that, something we need to do. I'm definitely the, this is continued professional growth and personal health and well-being. The objectives to engage the regional, in the regional superintendents, which I definitely have. I've continued, I've been working on a draft of an action plan. So there's four superintendents in the area, three other besides myself, working on that, which has been great work and for me to get to know the other, some of the other superintendents in the, in the area. And one of, another superintendent is, has been my mentor for the year, which has been great. So I feel like I'm pretty closely involved in that work. And I also sit on the RAB and I'm the one to bring that information to the other superintendents. I have a, there's another superintendent on it also, but we bring the information to the, to our regional group. And then I attend all the Vermont superintendent's meetings and conferences. To continue with the New England Board, I am now co-president and am co-planning, this is what I do on my weekends, co-planning an annual conference for September. It's in Vermont in Stowe. I've been on the hiring committee for the new, New England Association Superintendent of Schools Executive Director. And then with the national level, I did say that I wanted to do something nationally for that, but that's, that course is a national one, which will be great to get to know other dis, or other, how they run things in other states. And then learning to support the principals on, as instructional leaders, again, that's that course. And that course is a full year. I don't continually go away, but I get a coach, which would be interesting. And then, I didn't put down for evidence, but I could plug in my Fitbit and you could see how much I walk. That would be kind of cool. I walked 15,000 steps yesterday when I was at, I've been away at Boy State this week. My husband runs it and I run the office and work with, there's about 95 boys working with all week. So I did a lot of steps yesterday. It's also my wellness because my entire family helps. The sun in Mississippi isn't there this year, but it's fun. That's it.
Questions? Comments? Okay. As we said earlier, this, this was planned for the remainder of this year, but it clearly extends through next year as well. So thank you, Beth. Forward to periodic updates. Okay. So next on the agenda is promise and merger update.
So Beth and I went through the presentation, kind of gave it an update term here. And, you know, it is available to you. We'll go through it quickly and we can see where some of the questions are. But basically our, the concept that we had was to work through the document as we had presented to the public, I guess now going back to October-ish of last year, where we took the RED study and we looked at all the promises that were made in the RED study work and in the idea of forming the new district. So a number of items happened in FY18. We're pleased to have the one vision. We have with the first day of FY18, the new district had students for the first time. So that created our continuum of education in a pre-K-12, including a technical center. It allows students to transfer to other schools within the unified district. That was done by policy just a month or so ago. And then in FY19, we really want to focus in on the personal learning plans. And that's been done by capturing an opportunity of a veteran who can move in with a special focus on a part-time basis next year. And that's some of how we want to leverage our institutional skills and knowledge to do that. When we look at the teaching staff FY19, we're going to increase opportunities for part-time employees to find increased employment. We do this, there was a case in which we added some FTE to a music instructor at Fleming. And there's other cases that the board has seen where we've been able to add. Again, once we have that training down, we have experience, the savings from recruitment are all part of that and the retention of solid employees.
Bus drivers.
For non-teaching staff, we have FY19, we have personnel can be reassigned with as greater need across the district. We've been doing that as in some of these cases where we've been taking veterans, moving them into focused and specialized roles so that we can really leverage that expertise. Efficiencies in the central office staffing, both FY18 and 19, that's occurred. And also the single central office to improve consistent, seamless leadership has been realized. Single office, not necessarily in a virtual way. Literally. So over the five-year period of million dollars in savings, this is a, this was a major part of our budget work. It was a major part of your budget work prior when you worked with Marilyn. So in FY18 and 19, we continue to make progress on this promise of saving money and with the consolidation of the central office personnel. In technology, FY18 was real busy. Single computer system, communications to improve with the new website, getting that ADA compliant, increased buying power for the internet services, greater flexibility regarding allocation. And in 19, really providing greater access and customized and personalized learning opportunities. That's the, the software that Beth just spoke about for the PLPs. Student data and collection, FY19 is going to be a huge year for this. Alpine is really going to deliver on a promise that I know as a former board member at the high school was just a frustrating conundrum of boundaries and separations when in a union district you really shouldn't have any. So this is going to be great and FY19 is going to be a big step forward to this.
Very exciting.
Very exciting.
Training coming up.
In finance, accounting and budgeting, we see in FY18, we reduced the number of state and federal IRS reports, which was great. We'll actually just have one stat book this year. And that means so little to everyone else in the world, but so much to my world. And then FY19, reduced the number of independent audits. So those are on the 18 fiscal year, but they're all conducted during FY19. So that will be great. Improve the utilization of facilities right out of the gate in FY18. We improved the facility rental agreement and have seen an uptake and an ease of use to use our facilities by the community and by nonprofits. Centralized contracting in 18, we were able to see a unified teachers and support staff agreements. We were able to have those agreements provide consistency in wages and work conditions across the board. We'll realize that more going in 19 where we're, where we have the high school take the step to the seven and a half hours and all be aligned that way. Increased purchasing power and stronger negotiating position through economies of scale is happening, continues to happen all the time with a real focus towards joint purchase agreements that I'm trying to move us towards so that we can really get and leverage our size as well as others. And then the collapse of duplicate electronic systems, student achievement data, all that kind of stuff. That's an ongoing, most likely we'll continue to see icons on the left-hand side as we just are able to address system after system. Transportation.
Just keep going. We did that.
Stuff is happening there. Food service, single child nutrition, we have, gives us scale to negotiate more affordable labor or food costs. We are stronger and more efficient partnerships going into the local growers. So that's 19. That's what will really leverage the expertise that we have in a long-serving employee to really be able to focus in on that. I mean, if we want to expand our farm to school, we need to expand our agricultural economy in the state. Right now, every bit of produce grown in the state is basically called for and sold well before it's harvested. And then greater efficiencies and less overhead. We saw that in next year's budget with being able to eliminate, at least for FY19, any general fund subsidy.
Just on a side note, Brian and I met with all the food service people last week. It was awesome.
Yeah, we sat down with 50, 50 of our employees that are involved with food service, including our subs, and had a great 45-minute conversation, worked through the vision with them, did some work that way. So it was really fun.
Nice.
And the morning, that morning, Beth and I had coffee and donuts with all our crossing guards. And in both of those meetings, we were told by our employees, one by just an adorable older gentleman and then another one that works in food service saying, I think we have the most appreciated job in the entire district. People are always telling us thank you. So that was, that was, that was a really good day. And then support staff, we're increasing the flexibility, allocate resources and design programs. I think this is really getting to live and breathe the idea of a continuum and one district and stronger together. And then greater continuity in our procedures, processes, programs, services, providers, families, for family, students and staff. And that's just because we're just more aligned and coordinated now. So the promises are coming true. There's plenty of work to do and to accomplish. And then all of this is to make sure that the gains that we do have are really solidified and strengthened and that we can build from these to start to dream more promises.
And a lot of that's support services. Those are a lot of our goals, those are, fall under our goals of our continuous improvement plan.
Questions? Are we done? Okay. Questions? Comments? Thanks, that's helpful. You know, we had in our work planned for this year that we would do this like three times throughout the year. I hope we'll continue to do it because I think it's an important focus. It's a big reason why we merged and we should keep talking about what is coming out of that merger. Okay, let's move on to task team updates, communication.
Don't have much to report. We're going to meet after this meeting to figure out our strategy for communicating while the board isn't meeting. We're going to be working with Ben and with Brian and Beth. There are some big topics that we know we need to communicate regularly throughout the summer, so we're going to be doing that and look for updates for Voices. We had another meeting last night and we are also going to be meeting over the summer to figure out the fall conversations and how we're going to move forward with that work. Anything else, Pat? PTO?
Talked about the fall conversations, like announce what they're going to be about? I'm not sure if the rest of the board knows.
We talked, I mentioned in the update last week, last meeting, that we were looking at doing something around equity, where we're going to be working closely with Beth to really define what that is, inclusivity, how to be a welcoming community. The framing of the question is really, really going to be really important. And the Voices group is working closely with Beth and with Brian on making sure that we're asking the right questions and engaging the community in the appropriate way to reach the outcomes of the, of the Nellie Mae Grant and make sure that our outcomes are consistent with what we said we wanted to do and what the admin, what, what would be most helpful for the community and the administration.
Okay. Questions? Comments?
The only thing I think I just may add to that from our meeting last night, and I think it's somewhat echoing what Liz just said, is that we had a clear purpose for the four-week discussions last round to contribute to the development of the vision for the district. And if, and we heard the importance of student voice, we asked, you know, the word came out of that around looking at the grading system. And there were things that we were able to immediately see response to. And so just asking for four weeks of time from folks, I think we'd like to know that we're sort of framing it in a way that gives some sense of what will be done with that feedback over that course of time. So I think that is where the coordination with what would be most helpful.
Right. And it's not clear how we're going to do that yet, so that we will keep you posted on whether it will be four sessions again, we're asking for that, or whether we're going to do it in a slightly different way as the last effort of this three-year engagement process. So we, we will be working on that with Voices and with Beth and Brian and we will keep you informed as we move forward on that.
Great. Do you have some students in doing that work who are seniors who will need to be replaced?
Or? We don't actually. Our, they're, they're upcoming seniors. So we have a lot of people who, who are, we don't have anyone that we're losing right now from our core critical group. There are three students right now who, four students who are really involved in the work on a core and, and come to the core steering committee meetings and none of them are seniors, thankfully. We'll have them for a bit longer. Yeah.
That's, yes. All right. Wonderful. State-wide update.
So I looked and the veto stands.
No.
So who knows what's next? Who knows what's next?
No override, they did not have the.
Thank you, VPR.
Missed by four, I think.
Yeah. And it sounds as though there needs to be compromise, but it can't include any tax increase, so I'm not exactly sure since it's also, in my opinion, fiscally irresponsible to continue to fund with one-time money ongoing expenses. And it puts us all back in the hole again, which seems to be lost. It just seems entirely political and incredibly frustrating.
Yeah.
So to whatever extent you are able to reach out to your legislators, I would encourage you to do so. It's going to be interesting to see what comes next, but there are tremendous costs to the state, to employees of the state, to retirees of the state, to put into place the, the ability to cover essential services and retirement if we are otherwise closing government.
If the government shuts down. Well, another piece that we're starting to hear from the league of cities and towns is that towns may have to put out two tax bills. One on the regular timetable for municipal taxes and then the second one for education taxes because they don't have the information in time and that's going to be costly. So it's, as someone who worked in that pillar for 22 years, I just have to say. I just have to say I find this whole thing very, very sad. That there doesn't seem to be the ability to find a way to get to the table and figure this out.
Do we know of any other time that the state government shut down?
I, I don't believe it ever has. Oh, didn't they say, what, nineteen sixty-one or something like that? Yeah, that's right. They, they came back in July, they made some contingency plans and then came back in July and passed a budget, but.
I do have a question and chalk this up to my lack of, you know, how the state funding and the state employees sort of come back to the school system. Does this impact the schools at all? Like, does the Board of Education shut down? Like, do we lose access to resources we might have or anything along those lines? Or are we more or less, you know, kind of continuing on until it gets resolved?
I think we're certainly okay for now. We don't get our first big payment till September, which is why we have the tax anticipation. I suppose there could be things like licensing of teachers that if, if state employees are out for a long time, could start to impact us, but.
July and August are pretty high stakes reporting months.
Right.
So.
Reporting to them.
Yeah.
Yeah. So they may have to move deadlines and stuff.
Yeah.
So, we'll see. I, I still hold out some hope that something will happen by eight June thirtieth. But if that's going to be the case, why isn't it happening? I just don't get it, so. Okay, any questions or comments on that? Okay, so our agenda for August seventh?
We have to, we wanted to update on the, to get it in the minutes.
Yes, please do.
So Martha and I attended the superintendent and board chair training, which according to the law, we need to do year of annually. So we did, um, we worked on roles and responsibilities of the board and of the superintendent. We worked on some policy work. Let's see, we had, I did send you the agenda as, so you would know exactly what we did. But it was better than last year.
It was a, it was a nice, yeah. It was a nice time for Beth and I to spend some time together. I have to say, I didn't need to hear the DMG report.
We have heard that a lot. I heard it the next day, too.
The roles and responsibilities activity was actually fun. They did it with an activity instead of talking at us. And in the agenda, it says we talked about education funding, but we didn't because the legislature was still in flux, so that didn't happen. They had expected the session to be done and that they would tell us, but it came out of the session. Okay, so we need the board to affirm the authority for the chair and vice chair to sign teacher contracts on behalf of the board during this time when the board won't be meeting. So, can I see some, I guess, some head nuts to affirm that you are comfortable? Okay. Would the chair and vice chair signing those contracts? All right, so Kim, there's an affirmation of that. Do we want to do this first? Okay, I want to say something too, but you go first. I just have to, I want to say that it's been fabulous to have Nick on the board. He's been our trailblazer. I tried to think of some kind of trailblazing logo to give him or whatever. I have to say that I was privileged last month to work with him to interview both juniors and sophomores. And Nick did a wonderful job in that, during those interviews. So, it's just been a great pleasure to work with you, Nick.
Vice versa, Ms. Heath, you guys are all awesome.
I'll turn it up to the Kim.
Oh, you shouldn't have.
Congratulations, thank you very much for helping us bring student voice to this work. It's for me been the most impactful thing that's happened in all my years of board service and.
Oh, goodness.
Truly, though, to have you have taken the lead on things like the gun violence issue and to really help bring student voice to conversation around the Black Lives Matter. It really brought all of our game up, I think, and it helped folks in the audience hear firsthand how what we do every day is impacting you guys as you sit in your classrooms and in your schools. So thank you.
Well, actually, I, I really have to thank you. I didn't expect this to go anywhere. I thought you guys were going to like shoo me off. But, but to see that, that a public committee like such as yourselves are so open and receptive to, I don't know, to, to lower beings like myself. It's truly flattering, really shows me that, that I, I am in a very, very good school system. Thank you all so much.
Thank you. Enjoying DMG, so lucky to have you. We have this little thing in there for you can open another time, reminder of us and.
And don't be a stranger, come anytime.
Invite you to our August ninth retreat if you're available. I think you would bring great insight, having spent the last year with us. Because we spend some time reflecting on the last year and thinking about our goals for the coming year. So, not a lot of pressure because you're sort of off the hook. But we would love to have you and you'll get dinner.
Yeah, free food.
Free food, August night. Definitely make sure you're included on our distribution.
Wonderful. Thank you, Nick. Okay, so our board, we're going to meet twice, the weekend, August the seventh and the ninth. For our board agenda for the seventh, we will be doing the superintendent evaluation in executive session. Are there other things that, is there anything that any board members not involved in the agenda setting want to be sure that we get onto that agenda?
Probably transportation.
Yeah, probably transportation.
Mix it up a little bit.
I think Brian, probably Brian would put that on the agenda.
Also have a fourth quarter unaudited financial statements. We'll take a look at general funds as well as Center for Technology and the enterprise funds. So that'll be June thirty, end date.
Good.
I did want to let you know that Sue and Reed will be working with Voices on that engagement piece. Reed will not be able to be here on the ninth, he's on, he's on vacation, but Sue will be facilitating that piece and Reed will be doing the work from now until then to inform that part of the agenda.
Okay, good. Yeah, so we have done a draft agenda for the ninth and maybe Brian can put it up there. We tried to design it so that our student reps would join us for dinner and for the conversations after dinner. And that we would do things like our board training for discipline hearings in the morning. The one thing I haven't, I gone back through yet is in addition to talking about how to engage the community around the budget process or, there were a few other things in the board self-evaluation that I was going to go back and look at and we'll do that before we finalize this agenda. Did anybody have anything they thought was missing or?
Oh, on the definition of ends, because I don't think our public, for half of the public is going to understand what that means. We need to define that so our public understands what we're doing.
Oh, on the agenda.
On the agenda.
Okay.
No, understood, good, good point.
We need to communicate to our public so that we know what we're up to.
Yeah, good, good point. Anything else? Okay. So, our messages to the community. I think probably a transportation message and a, and a link.
A link to the job description so that they can sign up? A link to the job description so they can sign up?
Bus drivers, yeah.
Yeah, so to rehash stuff.
I think.
The questions that come in. Maybe you put something out and then we're able to get responses, maybe I can answer them.
So I think the second thing is the update on Beth's goals. And the third thing is the promise of merger update. Does that sound right to everyone? Okay. Well, with that, entertain a motion that we move into executive session pursuant to the S.A. Title I, Section Three Thirteen, Subsection Three, to discuss the evaluation of a public officer for. Thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. I would invite just the board and Beth to the executive session.